Council Police Chief just advised that they're having, one of their new officers is delayed en route. So he's asked that we could move the swearing in down to after the approval of the meeting minutes before we report to the city. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Unless you have a further delay then, Chief, and then we won't be hiring no officers. We'll just, no one will get sworn in, nobody gets a paycheck, and if he's still late, we'll make it work somehow, okay?
Should be good for a nickname for the next 20 years. I'm not sure what that'll be, but...
They'll think of it.
Sure, it won't be repeated in public either. Snowflakes are the next ring to this. Snowflake. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, December 15th, 2016. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick is excused this evening. Counselor Genatino?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Carvahal?
Here.
And Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two announcements this evening. The first is that the next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Auburn will be held on Monday, December 19th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Meeting will be held at the council chambers of Memorial City Hall, 24th South Street in Auburn. Secondly, the next meeting of the Auburn Industrial Development Authority for the City of Auburn will be held on Wednesday, December 21st, 2016, at 5:00 PM. This meeting will be held at the first floor conference room of the Chamber of Commerce Building located at 2 State Street in downtown Auburn. That's all we have this evening.
Thank you. We will move along to the public to be heard.
At this point in time, we will open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. Just in case there are anyone desiring to be heard. Anyone this evening? Very well. Approval of meeting minutes from December 1st of this year. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, second by Counselor Carvahal. Discussion, comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Meeting minutes from December 8th of this year. We need a sponsor. Counselor Genatino, second by Counselor Cuddy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess as a lead in to some of the other things I've got listed here, I'd like to request council's blessing to allow for business to be conducted at next week's meeting in an effort to clear up some year-end business and possibly avoid the December 29th meeting, if we're able to do that. The December 29th meeting is both the fifth meeting of the month, and it falls between the Christmas and New Year's holidays. So with your approval to throw a couple items on next week's agenda that would require vote, we'll be prepared to take care of a few year-end items.
It sounds like it's everyone's agreement with that. Please.
Okay. So for the rest of the report, late last week, the city was notified that the Fred L. Emerson Foundation will be awarding us a grant of approximately $220,000 to make improvements to the tennis and basketball courts at Clifford Park. Next week, there will be a resolution on the agenda to accept this funding and approve the documents, approve documents related to the grant to be signed. The planning office will be working with engineering to optimize the use of the funds. So that's something that's been discussed for quite some time, and it should be able to be put to good use. Also last week, the city was awarded a grant by the New York State DEC to fund 90% of a $50,000 project to install activation and flow monitoring devices at the city's combined sewer overflows, also referred to as CSOs. The grant will allow the city to perform upgrades that will allow us to comply with New York State DEC Sewage Pollution Right-to-Know Program. And the grant application and approval is necessary to execute the grant award were previously approved by council at the June 2nd, 2016 meeting. So this is an announcement for you. Everything else has already been taken care of once the award documentation is executed. The city match for this project, just as a reminder, is $5,500, and that funding is available within the current budget for the sewer department, so it should not be a problem. Also for next week, the engineering department has solicited bids from several firms for the temporary structural improvements of the North Division Street Bridge. Six bids were received, ranging from approximately $72,000 to approximately $247,000. With that in mind, next week, there'll be a resolution on the agenda to authorize the expenditure of approximately $75,000 to conduct the necessary repairs on the bridge to avoid closure. We will also have the engineering staff here, as well as a consulting engineer present to address any technical questions regarding the bridge, to help guide you through your decision on whether to approve those funds or opt for the closure of that bridge. This week, I met with representatives from the Auburn High School, Tyburn Academy, and BOSI's to discuss some opportunities to work together, and more specifically, to attempt to improve opportunities for a broader range of students with varied interests by offering internships within the city operation and by providing improved outreach and education related to the employment opportunities in the city and how to navigate the New York State Civil Service System, which sometimes is a barrier. Some immediate opportunities for improvement were identified, and those are already being worked on, and other ideas are being investigated. We expect to continue that dialogue. It was a good meeting. And the last thing I have is the police department, even with the addition of these three additional officers this evening, is facing some shortages of staff due to retirements, and the police chief has approached Civil Service Commission regarding the potential to do lateral transfers. And I'd like him to say a few words about that so that...
Absolutely.
...you all are familiar with what's...
So with the three additional officers that will be swearing in tonight, we just hired another officer who joined the academy in Syracuse, December 5th. We have been presented with retirement letters from four of our senior officers that are expecting to retire by January 30th. That is their date. With that said, the Syracuse Police Academy, which, as I said, has already started, the Onondaga Police Academy has also begun their recent class, October 30th, and both do not have a scheduled academy class after these are completed this spring. With that said, these four retirements are obviously going to leave us short, and we want to fill those as quickly as possible in the most fair, equitable way we can. And something that we are looking and exploring with the Civil Service Commission is the possibility of accepting lateral transfers. The deputy chief and I met with Civil Service and presented the idea. They asked us to, if we do accept some applicants, they gave us some guidelines that we need to follow in order to meet state and local civil service law, and then they would take each of those on a case-by-case basis and determine if they meet the criteria, and that would be an adequate, acceptable way to replace those officers. Ideally, we want to file the civil service list, but unfortunately, with the situation we have been presented, we don't have any options, and the most likely outcome is an academy this fall, either Syracuse or Onondaga. That's going to put us out near two years before we can get any replacements. So not only these four, we do have the possibility of additionals sometime this summer, from what we've gathered from talking to some of our senior officers.
So a lateral transfer is from the sheriff's department or from another police department?
So just a basic guideline, lateral transfers that are accepted by municipalities like ours have to have completed in an academy, like the ones that we, you know, DCGS certified. They cannot be on probation, so they have to be, not senior, but off of a probation and in a permanent status. They cannot come from New York State Police, New York City Police Department, or SUNY backgrounds from academy, because that does not transfer over in a similar pattern as a municipal police academy does. So there are some pretty stringent guidelines that our local civil service and some research has shown that we have to follow. But they have to have come off a New York State list, similar to ours, and through a certified academy like ours.
Chief, in your particular department, it's happened before. Am I correct?
It has happened before. It's been a little while, and usually, like, just keep in mind, we want to follow the procedure that has been established locally, but this is a unique situation. It put us into a predicament, and the deputy chief and I are trying to plan for that. Obviously, vacancies lead to overtime. There's a multiple, a multitude of issues that were faced, and it shorts our shift in our patrol division. But we have taken several officers in the past successfully. So it's something that we would like to, you know, research with Civil Service and hopefully with your blessing as well.
Your three new officers tonight may pick up seniority.
Very quickly.
Other people are older officers, right?
Absolutely. So we will obviously keep you up to date on that and up to speed. We are planning, the next Civil Service meeting is January 9th. They have asked us to hopefully present some possibilities within that timeframe, so we're formulating more or less an advertisement that, you know, we're looking at this option. And it doesn't mean this option's going to play out either, it's just we want to research all of our possibilities. Still not here.
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you. Counselor?
I have a question in regards to the resolution for the bridge. Last week, when we discussed it, it was mentioned that there had been some traffic studies done. Can we get results of those, and can those results be broken down to commercial and non-commercial traffic?
I am not sure about the commercial and non-commercial. I do believe we've got those traffic studies. We can get those to you through the week here, even if you want. I know that the engineering department and the consulting engineers will be prepared to speak to those issues also next week.
Yeah, just like a little background before, I'm expected to just vote on it. The other thing I would ask is, can we be provided with potential rerouting of traffic detours for both commercial and non-commercial?
I'll see if we can get that.
Thank you.
Are the traffic numbers broken down into months, or is it just because it's reported in, I mean, it's only recorded at a certain timeframe?
I've only heard them referred to as annual or daily numbers, but I'll see if we can get the, you know, if they do it by day of the week, time of day type of things. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, or at least in reference to when the numbers were recorded, just...
Okay.
Because I think there may be some seasonal numbers that I may be interested in. Depending on when the data was collected.
Counselors, your turn. Any extending report this week? Chief, could have put you on the spot.
Absolutely.
Would you prefer to move ahead, or do you want to...
Please, please move ahead. Or we can have this young man step in. He's about the same age as our one we're missing.
We can, we can work on an ordinance and a resolution or so.
Please.
I apologize, yeah, please move ahead.
You know, I hate to keep the public here, but you're going to see your government in action, so probably curious about ever coming back to a council meeting, but it's interesting, so.
One of the guys missing.
Excuse me. Ordinance number 14 of 2016, amending the sanitary sewer ordinance of the City of Auburn to amend the definition of pretreatment regulations. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Cuddy?
Ordinance 14 of 2016, whereas Section 242 entitled Sanitary Sewers is cited as the sanitary sewer ordinance of the City of Auburn, New York, and whereas on November 14th, 2005, the Environmental Protection Agency made changes to the general pretreatment regulations at 40 CFR Plant Part 403, which included clarifications of existing regulations specifically regarding significant non-compliance to instantaneous maximum limits and best managerial practices. And whereas on November 20th, 2014, the City of Auburn amended its sewer use ordinance, including changes to the definition of significant non-compliance to include best management practices. However, that amendment failed to include the clarification regarding instantaneous limits. And whereas it is necessary that the city modify its definition of significant non-compliance by amending Section 242-79 of the sanitary sewer ordinance as follows. A) Chronic violations of wastewater discharge limits defined here as those in which 66% or more of wastewater measurements taken during a six-month period exceed a numeric pretreatment standard or requirement, including instantaneous limits, for the same pollutant parameter by any amount. B) Technical review criteria violations defined here as those in which 33% or more of wastewater measurements taken for each pollutant parameter during a six-month period equal or exceed the product of the numeric pretreatment standard or requirement, including instantaneous limits, multiplied by the applicable criteria 1.4 for BOD, TSS, fats, oils, and grease, and 1.2 for all other pollutants except pH. And whereas the term significant non-compliance shall mean, Auburn should revise its definition of significant non-compliance to reflect the 2005 clarifications to the general pretreatment regulations at 40 CFR Part 403. Now therefore, be it ordained, Section 242-79 of the sanitary sewer ordinance of the City of Auburn is amended as follows. Section 242-79, publication of users in significant non-compliance. A) Chronic violations of wastewater discharge limits defined here as those in which 66% or more of wastewater measurements taken during a six-month period exceed a numeric pretreatment standard or requirement, including instantaneous limits for the same pollutant parameter by any amount. And B) Technical review criteria violations defined here as those in which 33% or more of wastewater measurements taken for each pollutant parameter during a six-month period equal or exceed the product of numeric pretreatment standard or requirement, including instantaneous limits, multiplied by the applicable criteria of 1.4 for BOD, TSS, fats, oils, and grease, and 1.2 for all other pollutants except pH. And be it further ordained, that said amendments to the ordinance shall become effective upon publication.
Thank you. Counselors, discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Appointment Resolution Number 175 of 2016, appointing member of the Cemetery Commission. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Carvahal.
Appointment Resolution 175 of 2016, whereas Section 135 of the Auburn City Code entitled Cemeteries provides for the establishment of a cemetery to include a place dedicated for the burial of the dead, and the city owns and maintains sole cemetery in the town of Senate, which is regulated by Chapter 135 of the City Code. Whereas Section 135-12 entitled Cemetery Commission Paragraph A states that there shall be a commission consisting of eight individuals to be known as the Cemetery Commission, which shall consist of the city manager, city controller, director of public works, a member of city council, and one cemetery lot owner residing in the City of Auburn, one cemetery lot owner residing in the town of Senate, and one licensed funeral home director regularly conducting a funeral business in the City of Auburn, and one member-at-large. And whereas the appointment of members of the Cemetery Commission are recommended by the mayor and approved by the council, and currently, a member of the commission needs to be appointed to fill a vacancy at this time. Whereas it is necessary that the mayor recommend the following individual to serve as member of the Cemetery Commission, Thomas Weed, to serve as a member-at-large. Now therefore, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the mayor, the Auburn City Council confirms the following appointment to the Cemetery Commission, Thomas Weed, to serve as member-at-large. And be it further resolved that the appointee listed shall serve for a term effective December 16th, 2016, through September 30th, 2017. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Your new officers, T. Weed, who we're talking about, is a retired member of your department, so we don't really let you retire, we just find other jobs for you, but in this case, we don't pay you anything, just a thank you, so. No further discussion? If you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Financial Resolution Number 176 of 2016, authorizing the transfer of certain operating funds. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Genatino?
Financial Resolution 176 of 2016, whereas the City of Auburn has done a mid-year review of budget accounts and needs authorization to transfer funds between accounts to cover expenditures for the rest of the fiscal year 2016, 2017, as outlined in Attachment A. And whereas these transfers do not increase the overall fund budget, now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that 1, the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the transfers in Attachment A for the 2016, 2017 fiscal year, and 2, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Financial Resolution Number 177 of 2016, amending the city fee schedules for garage parking fees. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Carvahal.
Financial Resolution 177 of 2016, whereas the executive director of the Business Improvement District provided a presentation to the City Council on December 8th, 2016, discussing the lack of use of the city parking garage and the desire of the Business Improvement District to increase utilization of the parking garage. And whereas to incentivize the use of the parking garage, the Business Improvement District has proposed to lower rates so that the hourly parking garage parking fees are less than the on-street parking fees by making the first hour free, subsequent hours 75 cents per hour, and a $6 a day cap. And whereas the hourly parkers in the parking garage generated only $20,559.75 for fiscal year 2016, and whereas it is necessary to amend the city fee schedule to implement this proposal. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby amend the garage hourly rates as set forth in the city fee schedule to be zero for 0 to 1 hour, 75 cents for each hour thereafter, and a $6 per day cap.
Counselors, while I'm supporter of this particular resolution, the parking committee started meeting before we received word of our new visitor center in the lot across South Street. So at this point, I will make a motion that we table this until we find out we have a better plan as to what the parking is going to be like in the downtown area, and suggestions from our consultants and so forth, so it's a formal motion to table. Do we have a sec? Counselor Carvahal, the second. So recall, there's no discussion in regards to table. Correct, Mr. Rossing?
Correct.
So would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Genatino, motion to table?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried. Table.
Very soon.
Very soon.
Mayor, you wanted a volunteer to speak? He'll be here shortly.
Which way do you want me to speak? Want to go for another one?
Sure, absolutely.
Agreement Resolution Number 178 of 2016, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Town of Aurelius that confirms the city's intention to provide water services to the town for a term of 30 years. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Cuddy?
Agreement Resolution 178 of 2016, whereas the City of Auburn supplies water to the Town of Aurelius pursuant to a release settlement and water rate agreement duly executed on January 21st, 2016. And whereas the agreement states an initial term of 25 years ending in 2020, and then states additional five-year terms which renew automatically unless either party serves an intent not to continue this agreement. And whereas the Town of Aurelius has received 30-year long-term financing from the Environmental Facilities Corporation to finance the cost of its joint drinking water infrastructure project with the Village of Keegha. And whereas a standard condition of financing, the Environmental Facilities Corporation requires the agreement to state a term as long as the project, which in this case is 30 years. And whereas in order to receive the required long-term financing, the Town of Aurelius needs to demonstrate to the Environmental Facilities Corporation that a 30-year commitment for the water supply will flow through the project under the agreement. And whereas the agreement proposed to be executed by the city manager in this resolution provides evidence of the city's commitment to provide water service through the project for 30 years for the purposes of the Environmental Facilities Corporation's financing. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, that 1, the city manager of the City of Auburn is hereby authorized and directed to execute the agreement between the City of Auburn and the Town of Aurelius, which states the city's intention to provide water service to the town for a term of 30 years, and 2, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Very good. Thank you. City manager, anything you would like to add at this point, or...
No, just a reminder to everybody that this doesn't change the terms of the agreement for the cost of the water, the rate, or anything like that. It's just to memorialize that there is a relationship between the city and the Town of Aurelius, that's all.
Discussion, counsel? Please call the roll.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
At this point, we will move along to our swearing in, our oath of office for our police officers. I'm kind of disappointed because you've kept myself, all of you here have kept myself in council in check tonight, so we've acted pretty well, so please stick around, you're more than welcome to, so. All right, and we will start out with Officer Morrissey?
Officer Morrissey, we have his girlfriend, Samantha Stewart. And then his dad, and whom we will by will be Gloria William, his parents.
P. after me. Aye?
Aye.
Get your name.
We're Morrissey.
Mussumi Square.
Mussumi Square.
Do you swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
In the charter of the city of Auburn?
In the charter of the city of Auburn?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of police officer?
Of the office of police officer?
According to the best of my bill?
According to the best of my bill.
Next, we have Officer Schmidt. Fully viable, we have Lisa Schmidt, who's bound. And the name is David, how will we end up, Mark?
Should be normal.
So you're the one who held us up, huh? Aye?
Aye.
Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
In the charter of the city of Auburn?
Charter of the city of Auburn?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of police officer?
Of the office of police officer?
According to the best of my bill?
According to the best of my bill.
Last but not least, Officer. Out of fully viable, we have Sidney and Emma, children, and White Fatsy, who we've been asking. Repeat after me. Aye? State your name.
Aye, Marco Mercu.
Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
In the charter of the city of Auburn?
Charter of the city of Auburn?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of police officer?
Of the office of police officer?
According to the best of my bill?
According to the best of my bill.
Mayor, council manager, thank you for these three additions, we are very proud of them. They just completed their field training program and have already hit the ground running. I know I sent you all a letter of commendation for one of these officers today for a wonderful act, helping our community already, so they've already made an impact within our community, and we are expecting much more excellent production from these fine gentlemen, and if this is an example of what our future is, these guys are surely a great example of what we have to look forward to. Thank you.
Counsel, with your permission, we'll take a five-minute recess. We've already put these folks through more than they deserve, so we'll be in recess.
Very good.
So cool. Well, we have a little Alaska white.
Sorry, I really wasn't.
That was my iPad, I can't, it beeped. Did you hear it?
Something we should know about out there? It's nasty out there.
I spent two and a half hours.
Debbie's got to stay away more often.
Is it worse up north?
It was worse, got as far as Great Bear Swamp, turned around, turned around, and then I.
Lot going on today.
Broke down to Baldsville and over to Jordan Albert.
The daylight is shorter.
Found myself in the parking lot.
One good thing about the weather, it keeps us grounded.
Miserable. I was looking out the window.
Today, the schools were a two-hour delay and then bang, all of a sudden, closed. I imagine people around two o'clock said, oh, I thought they canceled school. Look at it.
I went to Wegmans about two o'clock, three o'clock. It was crazy.
Oh, yeah.
We're stocking up a coat and thread.
Oh, wow.
Like, the next week is supposed to get another blast.
Are we really? Somebody said forty on Saturday, so I don't know.
My wife and the girls are out in Vegas. Yesterday, I think, or today or Sunday.
Where were they?
It's supposed to be in the forties there in Vegas.
Oh.
It's supposed to be in the forties there over the weekend.
Oh, that's cold out there.
Was it you?
Yeah, because it was telling me that it was snowing out. I alert, but I never set the sound on this, and I can't get it. Oh, there it is, it's on mute.
All set?
Yeah, that's right.
Counsel, all set? Call us back in this session. We will move along to Award Resolution Number 179, authorizing the engineering contract for North Street Water Main reconstruction project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Carvahal.
Award Resolution 179 of 2016, whereas council resolution number 54 of 2016 authorized city staff to submit an application to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for funding assistance to engineer and reconstruct a portion of the water line on North and York Street in an effort to provide reliable water service for industrial water customers located in the northwest section of the city. And whereas, in August 2016, the city of Auburn received notification from New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation of a funding award in the amount of $627,000 under the New York State Drinking Water Grant Program, and of $418,000 of New York State Drinking Water revolving loan funding for a total project financing of $1,045,000. And whereas, to move the project forward, the city issued a request for qualifications for professional engineering services related to the design and bid preparation for the reconstruction of the North Street Water Main. And whereas, on October 28, 2016, city of Auburn received eight responses to the request for qualifications, and through a competitive review process, CNS Engineers Incorporated of Syracuse, New York, was selected with a proposed fee not to exceed $166,000 for the design, engineering, and bid preparation related to the North Street Water Main project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Auburn, New York, that it does hereby award the engineering services contract for the North Street Water Main project to CNS Engineers Incorporated of Syracuse, New York, in the amount of $166,000 to be charged to a designed capital account entitled North Street Water Main, account number HF 8340440ii. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents in reference to the award of this bid.
Counsel, Mr. Lupien here, if we have any questions? No discussion? Very well. Please call the roll.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Appointment Resolution Number 180 of 2016, appointing managers of Auburn Community Baseball LLC. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Genatino.
Appointment Resolution 180 of 2016, whereas pursuant to council resolution 170 of 2016, approved by the council on November 17, 2016, the transfer of ownership of the minor league franchise owned by the city of Auburn to Auburn Community Baseball LLC was approved. And whereas, it is necessary that managers be appointed to the LLC to conduct the business of the limited liability company. And whereas, the following persons shall be appointed as managers of the Auburn Community Baseball LLC: Michael D. Quill, Jeffrey J. Deigert, Thomas Ganey, Robert W. Gothier, Michael P. Talbot, Charles Lynch, and John C. Rossi. And whereas, Jeffrey J. Deigert shall be designated as the individual with ultimate authority in order that he may act in concert with the managers to conduct the business of the LLC, and the appointments and designations shall become effective immediately and shall be subject to approval by the New York Penn Professional Baseball League. Now therefore, be it resolved, the following persons are appointed to managers of the Auburn Community Baseball LLC: Michael D. Quill, Jeffrey J. Deigert, Thomas Ganey, Robert Gothier, Michael P. Talbot, Charles Lynch, and John C. Rossi. Be it further resolved, that Jeffrey J. Deigert shall be designated as the individual with ultimate authority, said appointments and designations shall become effective immediately and shall be subject to approval by the New York Pennsylvania Professional Baseball League.
Thank you. Discussion, counsel? Counselor?
Mayor, I'd like to table this resolution, and I just, I'm unsure about a couple of things I need to research on, and I'd like to table it.
Very good. Motion to table, do we have a second?
A second.
Counselor Carvahal? The clerk would call the roll to table this resolution.
Motion to table 180, Resolution 180 of 2016, Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried, table.
Mr. Rossi, this next resolution, is this, was this one that was formally tabled a few weeks back?
It was tabled, it has been changed, Joe.
Has been, all right, very good, thank you.
So it's not the same resolution?
Very good, thank you. Appointment Resolution Number 181 of 2016 for the appointment of commissioners of deeds. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Cuddy?
Appointment Resolution 181 of 2016, whereas the Auburn City Council has appointed commissioner of deeds to allow a person the authority to take affidavits, depositions, and acknowledgements of deeds for use in the city in which the person is appointed. Powers are similar to that of a notary public, and whereas, Section 139 of the executive law of the state of New York and the Auburn City Code, Section 62.1, set forth the authority and procedure for appointment of commissioner of deeds, and those persons shall be appointed by the city council for a designated term. And whereas, the term of commissioner of deeds shall expire on the 31st of December of the even-numbered year next after he or she shall be appointed, and there are requirements that the person receiving the designation must reside or work in the city of Auburn and can only administer the commission within the city of Auburn. Those persons must file an oath of office with the city clerk and with the county clerk. And whereas, the current commissioner of deeds is set forth on the list attached to this resolution and totals forty-two persons, two of which were new appointments made in the last year, and is estimated that eight new appointments may be necessary within the next two years. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby appoint the list of persons attached to this resolution as a commissioner of deeds pursuant to the authority provided by Section 139 of the executive law of the state of New York, and the set appointment shall be effective from January 1, 2017, and shall continue until December 31, 2018. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the, be it further resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby determine that the number of commissioner of deeds for the city of Auburn shall be a maximum of fifty, which is the number of commissioner of deeds appointed by the list attached to this resolution, plus additional numbers to be reserved for future necessary appointments.
Set?
All set.
Thank you. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Other business from the council?
If I may, just one more thing about the Division Street Bridge. Could we also talk to the fire chief and police chief about any public safety concerns if we were to reroute traffic, seeing as how that Station 3 is right there? I can do that. Thank you.
Are you going to answer that, or are you just going to work? Put your other head on the wall.
I have a question about adding a streetlight in the city? How does that happen? There is a really very dark corner on William Street and Westlake where the YMCA, that corner is there, and there are, there are kids leaving the Y and leaving events there, and I don't, I don't know if anybody from the city goes around and takes a look. If just sometime, go and take a look, and I don't know what it, what it, what it is, but it's extraordinarily dark there, and I kind of looked around, and there's, there's no streetlight up, it must be, it's Westlake, right, or maybe Easterly? All the way to the corner of Easterly where there's the Y in the road, there is a streetlight up there, and then there's the ornamental-type streetlights that are behind the Seward House, but there, 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 just go and take a look, it's, it's, it's dark.
I see Mr. Lupien and also Mr. Deigert have made a note of that, so I guess that's the way to do it.
Thank you, that's the way to do it.
We'll start it that way. Anyone else? We have a request for executive session?
I have none, Your Honor.
Entertained a motion to adjourn? Counselor Carvahal, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Motion to adjourn at 6:50 PM, Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Carvahal.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Adjourned.
We're adjourned. (inaudible).